So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, it's 5:33. Welcome everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include an additional item in executive session. Employee information was received today that merits the amendment and the good faith reason is to prevent or lessen an immediate financial loss to the district that was discovered after the agenda had been posted. So that's my motion. Having a motion in a second, I need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gerson?
Yes.
Trustee Bing?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Quinney?
Yes.
Hearing all yeses, the motion passes. I do need an approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board announcements, I do have an announcement. I would like to... Excuse me, the board would like to inform the public that at the July 27th, 2022 special board meeting, based on the recommendation by our current superintendent that was formulated from the review comments provided by our parents and community members, the board denied the use of the iReady reading curriculum. For transparency purposes, the iReady reading curriculum was placed in our schools at the direction of the prior superintendent. The curriculum was implemented as a supplement and without board approval or any form of a curriculum adoption process. It is this board's intention to provide teachers whoopsies, with the curriculum and resources they need to achieve excellence when educating our children. That will be attained through a curriculum adoption process that follows approved policy and implemented procedure. Any other announcements? Okay. We are now moving into the Armed Guard and Crisis Plan Workshop. What's up?
Microphone.
We have no microphones. Alright. Well then, I will repeat my announcement. Did someone notice? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't remember.
Not a problem. Okie dokie. Do I need to redo everything? Okay. Alright, so... The announcements, yeah. What's up? Approve the agenda, they not... I mean, we didn't have any audio, so... Correct, okay. So we, at 5:36, we discovered that the audio was not on. We did welcome new visitors and we did say the Pledge of Allegiance. I am going to restate my motion to amend the agenda to include an additional item in executive session. Employee information was received today that merits the amendment and the good faith reason is to prevent or lessen an immediate financial loss to the district that was discovered after the agenda was posted. May I have a second? Hearing a motion in a second, I need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gerson?
Yes.
Trustee Bing?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Quinney?
Yes.
Hearing all yeses, the motion passes. I now need an approval, a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. There is a board announcement. The board would like to inform the public that at the July 27th, 2022 special board meeting, based on the recommendation by our current superintendent that was formulated from the review comments provided by our parents and community members, the board denied the use of the iReady reading curriculum. For transparency purposes, the iReady reading curriculum was placed in our schools at the direction of the prior superintendent. The curriculum was implemented as a supplement and without board approval or any form of a curriculum adoption process. It is this board's intention to provide teachers with the curriculum and resources they need to achieve excellence when educating our children. This will be attained through a curriculum adoption process that follows approved policy and implemented procedures. Any other announcements? No, I don't. Moving on to the Armed Guard and Crisis Plan Workshop. We have been provided with the Armed District Safety Specialist Protocol.
I did change the type.
Yes, you did.
So this document was adopted by the previous board in 2018.
Okay.
But this current board has never seen these protocols and in working with the Armed District Safety Specialists on our team, we believe that this document actually should be made available to our public so that they can see that we have policies and procedures dialed in with regard to this particular position within the school district. So you'll see at the top where it says use of force. The initial was adopted by the board in December of 2018. This year, we worked on it, the District Safety Task Course, and so what is presented here, the first one, is one that we would like for the board to approve because we have made it a little bit more user-friendly
Okay.
and less law enforcement-ish.
Okay.
It still has all of the major components of it, but it doesn't require somebody to go and read it before you actually use it. It's a little bit more intuitive.
Okay. And how does this compare with the existing policies that we have? Do we look at them side by side, like the restraint and all those other, I can't remember all of them, that sort of fall into this category?
We did, we did not because these are all specific to law enforcement type behavior different than a parent pro or a teacher working with a child and restraining.
Okay, so then we have no policy to cover this that were this use of force that we're talking about. You're saying that the existing policies that we have... Okay.
The way that our legal counsel suggested we move forward when we built this program was to use the same policies, law enforcement. So that's what, these are law enforcement policies and we put them into this protocol document, but each of them is a policy which we could adopt and put into the policy manual if that's how the board wants to do it, we just kept them all together.
Yeah, sure, and that's, that's fine, but I think that as a district we need and as a board, we need to adopt saying, yeah, we adopt this. I mean, there's, that doesn't exist, you know? We should, there should have been something.
I don't think there's an ISBA template for that because we were the first district to do it. So we would have to create our own.
Sure, yeah, we can do that, yeah. So is it my understanding that you want to publish these under the policies on our website so that everyone has access? Okay.
Yep. Just for transparency purposes, so parents can see how...
It's a great idea.
They are, people respond.
So Lisa, is our objective tonight to re-adopt these or to adopt them collectively going forward so you have a new?
Yes.
Beginning point?
Since this board is new and you haven't seen them, they were approved by the former board, but... I just would like to see this become part of the... Because annually, you adopt the crisis plan. So I just think it's good practice because we are the only ones doing this that we, on that same night, bring this document forward and have the board formally adopt it as well. Then whomever's on the board will be aware of what those protocols, procedures, policies are.
Do our professionals have any input on...
They can talk as much as they want, that's why they're here. So I don't know if you've all met them, but so Mike Hogan is our Armed District Safety Specialist at Apple Elementary.
Thanks for helping me with that title.
John Hatcher is at Lakeland High School and Brad Schultz is at Lakeland Middle School. And we're in the process of finishing up the hiring for the fourth person who will be at Twin Lakes Elementary. So, yeah, they they put a lot of work into crafting these.
Will we get to meet that gentleman prior to anything? I'm just curious.
Why should I have done that?
I, I'm just curious.
Yes, you should.
I thought maybe he might be here tonight, but...
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, we have another workshop
next Monday.
So I can invite him.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
It'd be just nice to put a face to the body. Or the name, actually, because based on my... It is what it is.
Sorry, I should have done that. Do you want to talk about the use of force?
Oh, I've been through it quite a bit, so I'm pretty good.
They definitely will be able to answer your questions.
I suppose the biggest takeaway is that in the world of law enforcement and incidences in schools and all of that, stuff changes practically on a daily basis. I mean, there's always something new or better comes along or a different way. And we, and we certainly have that approach with these things. What we have in front of us is not carved in stone. It's gonna last forever. It should be a living document, constantly being revised and looked at, scrutinized. And I think that's another good reason to have it posted for, on the public to view, so you have other eyes looking at it and you might very well have somebody in the legal profession look at it and say, hey, you guys might run into a problem. Much easier to address it than, than have an incident and explaining that in a court situation.
Absolutely.
Has our legal counsel looked at these? They did. They did prior to the board initially.
Okay, so these have been, has this new revision?
The new revision has not gone.
Has not, okay.
And I can send it to Megan and ask her to take a look at it if you would prefer that we do it that way?
Well, I think until we have, well, I mean, I didn't compare like side to side, which is my only way of figuring out, okay, what are we really changing and what are we adding? I just wanna make sure that whatever we're revising, we're still in line with protection on liability issues and given that, you know, we are kind of leading the pathway here.
Yes, we are.
Which is an excellent place to be, I would like to say. I just wanna make sure everyone's protected.
I appreciate that and I have, I can send both to Megan and and ask her to just look at the one that we modified.
I mean, does anyone have any my board people, any qualms on that?
No.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Have you ever had to implement any of this since you've been in the district?
No, use of force stuff, no.
I have. I mean, if we were in a situation where we had to use, you know, like lethal force or something like that, you could have the best policy in the world, you're still gonna end up in court.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're still gonna be answering all of those things you did or did not do. So, yeah.
But what's, what helps you in court, and Mike keeps reminding me of this, is that we have the procedure, we have the policy, and we followed it.
Right, right.
So that's the part that's, we just wanna make sure we have it dialed in.
Right. Well, it protects you guys and it protects the district. So it's needed, you guys need the protection as much as the district does.
The civil lawsuit that's gonna follow us is...
Right. Well, I appreciate you sharing it with us and bringing us all to the table. It's welcome. And all the work that went into it, also in updating and appreciate all of that.
So there are a couple of new things in here that were there for the previous board, so that chain of custody tracking form. If, it can be something as minor as, you know, a student brings a a bowie knife to school for protection and it's taken, instead of giving it to the child and parents requested to come and get it, we can fill out the tracking form so that we know who has it and at what point in time was it given back to the parent. But it also could be in the event that something significant is happening and they have their body cameras on and they capture that event and it's going to become part of a criminal trial. We need a chain of custody tracking form of that video footage and so it's it's written in here that it goes to the custodian of records and, but you can see the handoff as it goes from the armed guard to the principal to the superintendent to the... However that goes, you can see all the people who've touched it. And just for, because we're talking about armed people in our schools, we felt like that this tracking form was important. So that's new, just as we've kind of worked through the process. And then the other thing that's new but isn't linked in, well, to... Mike created an inventory form that I could not find today, I was searching all over the place for it. I know you shared it with me, I couldn't find it. So, but he's created an inventory form, so we'll link that in there, but you'll be able to see all of the equipment that we've issued to each of the guards so that we're keeping track of all of those pieces. And then the protect, the protection order checklist. This is happening a lot where somebody's coming in with a protection order and just to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to with it and that the people who are supposed to know about it do, we put this together. So that's just one more piece that's new to this document this year.
I do have some questions just on the portable audio/video recorders. In reading it, it kind of implies that there are other members in our district that have these audio... Okay, because it's, it says all recording is made by members of any district issued device at any time.
So what we did, as you read through all of the policies, you might notice the word members, so every, these are law enforcement policies that, that were shared with us.
Okay.
So everywhere the word was law enforcement officer, we changed it to member and these are our three members. So I can change that verbiage if you want it to be something else, but every time you see member, it's these three.
But we just need to go ahead and say, just define it in, inside the document that members refers to.
I can do that.
That would be my suggestion anyways. As long as the definition is there, so if there is question, it's, the document itself defines it. Right, and then, because there's one statement, each uniformed member. So I mean, I understand who we're talking about, but I don't know if everybody will draw that same conclusion. And then I was just curious on the why, and I, me personally, think it needs to be more specified, but it states...
Which one are you looking at? Are you still looking at?
Yeah.
What page are you on?
Uh, they're not paged, the word. I think it's two. But it's under non-criminal matter, where it talks, it says that at any time that an armed district safety specialist reasonably believes that a recorded contact may be of benefit in a non-criminal matter.
To change the guard, I missed it.
Oh, what?
I left the word guard in there, I missed it.
Oh, that's okay. An example is a hostile contact. The guard may book the recording media into safekeeping or download the file in accordance with current procedure for storing digital files. Is there a reason we can't make it definitive, like?
I don't even know that actually we need to just change that because we don't have a way to put it into safekeeping unless we download it.
Exactly, yeah, we might just download it.
So I just need to fix that.
Take that now. Makes it shorter and easier.
Yeah, it's non-criminal matter. Well, it's a totally different form, so it's the portable audio/video recorders. Right here. Oh, okay, you're, yeah, I gotcha. Public has no idea what we're talking about, can't see it.
They can't see it, this should have been linked so that the public...
Oh, but for the people here that don't have a... Can they see the screen with, with their focus on us? Nope.
Oh, for our people on video?
Yes.
Okay.
My, because my thought would be the more information we have in support of whatever occurred and the more secure it is or however we're doing it, as long as it's just a streamlined process, we should be good to go. I mean, wouldn't you agree?
I agree.
Okay.
Well, and what we don't want, I mean, gray, living in the gray is okay sometimes, but when we're talking about legal issues?
Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be black and white. So that's what we've been trying to accomplish is that everybody is going to read it and understand it in the same way.
Yeah.
That just helps clarify that one.
Perfect. Have we ever had to restrain people?
You mean with hand, actual handcuffs?
I don't know because our policy is handcuffing and restraints. To me, handcuffs are restraints. So I don't know if we use anything else for restraining people.
I mean, if you're physically holding somebody, you're restraining them.
Okay, okay, okay. Have we, but have we had to use handcuffs on anyone? Okay, okay. Have you had to strongarm a member, restrain? I'm just curious.
We had a student once who, was a special needs student.
Okay.
Went through an episode
Okay.
that we had to set him down.
Do you all like, and maybe you would be better, I don't know, do our teachers have the same type of how to properly restrain children for...
Different than the law enforcement officer.
Okay.
So we actually have that as one of our annual policies that we're bringing up. So CPI is the model that we use and it isn't supposed to be intended for every teacher having access to restraining techniques. It's supposed to be a team and it's really specific.
Okay.
You're not allowed to take a kid down to the ground. I mean, there's only certain holds you're allowed to do and so it's, you know, so every building has a select few that are trained in that, but completely different than what they...
Okay, okay. But they could easily reach out and save yourself, okay?
Right. And that's one of the policies that we have on our list to update because it hasn't been looked at for a while, so...
Okay.
As a matter of practice, when is your body camera on and when is it off?
So the body camera records, do you want to take that one there? It records all the time. So when we go into work, we charge it up, put it on, turn it on. As soon as you turn it on, it's actually on a loop. So when you hit what you would call the record button, it's actually saving it from that time or a little bit before that time. It just marks it until you turn it back off again. So it's, it's recording all the time as long as it's on. For full shift. Yes, yeah, for the full day. And again, all you're doing really, if you hit the button on it, it's just saving that spot. So when you go to download that information, that's what you're getting is that window of recording. The company is so amazing that they have, they certainly have police shootings and stuff that have occurred with these body cameras where the officer never hit that button, but they're able to send that camera in to the company and they can retrieve that data from it. It's quite remarkable, the technology. If it's on, it's recording.
Okay, so and, and daily, that's, is that saved to another location or does it stay on camera?
Yep, we have a couple of computers in district that we can download that information to. And we should only be keeping the information for as long as we need it. It's not like a forever deal. It of course doesn't end up on YouTube or any of that stuff. So somebody needs to be purging that out and I think the more stuff we put on there, we're gonna run into that because you're gonna be looking at terabytes of computer storage spaces and all to do to keep up with that. And then you have so much of it that's no longer needed that we have to have a way of purging that out and getting rid of it.
So just to clarify, what I think I heard you say is we don't save that information, we don't transport it, download it, whatever onto our system unless it's specific to something that we need to retain.
Right.
Okay.
So as soon as we hit the button to record, then it definitely saves that incident.
Okay.
And it'll go back 10 seconds, 30 seconds, whatever the cameras are set at.
Okay.
It's gonna go back to earlier time
Okay.
and then you hit it again to turn it off.
Okay.
And it changes colors on the camera if you have it set that way. There's all kinds of different settings.
Okay, okay.
And then the server goes to, I know it's secured in the school. I'm not sure who has access to that, but it's, it's a secure place.
Okay, Mike, do you know who has access to it?
Uh, technology people, I suppose.
Justin has.
Just Justin, okay. Because, yeah, I wouldn't want...
Mine's different.
Yours is?
They couldn't get mine to work on my desktop.
Okay.
So they gave me a laptop with a hard drive. So if I download something, I put it in a hard drive and then a hard drive goes into my safe.
I like that much better.
This is recent too and they brought one up there for Apple too. So we, I don't have anything on it, but that just happened now towards the end of the school, my school year.
Okay.
Yeah, we like that better too because it's not on the server.
Right.
It's actually on a laptop computer.
And it's secure away from the public.
Right.
So we, we were struggling with the the cameras talking to the desktops that we had. There was something in our servers, something in the system wasn't allowing them to download because Post Calls PD uses the same cameras and they had no trouble with them. And we were struggling. So we said, let's try, so Justin bought two laptops. So they're not, they're not on the server, there's, they're their own entity and they have their own storage. And they are working.
Far as I know.
Mine is working.
Okay.
Been using it.
So we need one more, then, well, two more. So we need two more this year then.
Okay, yeah, because I think it should be universal with how everything's treated.
Yep.
Consistent across the board. Absolutely, yeah. That way we can say, this is how we do it, not... Well, some of them are this way and some of them are this way. Is there an inventory form?
There is, I couldn't, Mike shared...
Oh, was that what we were talking about? Okay, got it.
And all that, and that's that form where Mike's done a really good job just going through everything that we... And all that, and that's that form where uh Mike's done a really good job of just going through everything that we've um given to each of them.
Okay.
For their job, their their weapons, their safes, their ammo, their uniforms.
Okay, so that's a specific to the employee? Okay, so wouldn't that just go into their employee file?
Well, it's a spreadsheet and it's just got a tab for Mike with everything we've given to Mike and then a tab for John so that we can kind of keep track and then when we, because our, like our um vests that they wear are uh only guaranteed for five years, so we have to kind of know when we order them so that we know when we need to buy a new one.
Okay.
And then you had asked at our last, when we were in Boise, or Texas.
Texas.
And I didn't know the answer to this, um but uh we were talking about the plates for rifles. Do do our vests have the rifle plates?
No.
We probably need those, don't you think?
Well, I mean, I'm not planning on being shot with a rifle. It's uh it's it's it is, it is an option, so, yeah, usually you see the plates, at least I saw the plates more on the 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 next lower vest, if you will, the next thinner vest. Just because they kind of wanted the best of both worlds, it was lightweight, more comfortable to wear, but it would stop more uh the larger rounds.
Okay.
For that reason, so we're already with a level three vest and I know I know it would certainly stop the nine millimeter round, that we're carrying probably all the handgun rounds and it might very well stop some of the common rounds like the two twenty-three and things like that, but I'd have to look into that for sure.
Well, my special knowledge that I learned was that uh the vests don't stop long range. They only stop the little handgun things.
It depends on the level of the vest, so there, they they do like five levels there. And so level one might stop like a three eighty and a twenty-two and the smaller calibers and then a level two might stop your medium calibers like your nine millimeters.
Okay.
And then we have the level three, which I'm confident will stop just every handgun round as far as that goes. But the the higher up you go in level, the thicker that kevlar is, the heavier it is, the hotter it is. All of that sort of, the military wears the stuff, you know, that's um designed to stop all of those three oh eight rounds, um high power rifle rounds, things like that, but the problem is, is even though you're stopping the round, give you an example, uh what happens is is the bullet does not penetrate, but it goes through and so if you punch that in five or six inches anyway, it stops your heart anyhow.
Okay.
So the the metal plate, the trauma plate is actually what that's called, um would absorb some of that. It distributes that impact out, so it's a larger area, so again, it wouldn't be my.
Well, see, I'm not anticipating anything that like that happening, but knowing that we're in an environment where rifles and shotguns are predominant, I wanna make sure you guys have what you need.
And I I appreciate, I appreciate that a lot, but to know though that the trauma plate is smaller than that envelope right here. They're they're very small, so it's actually probably like where the tape area is and it sits right here in the middle where your heart would be, and that's all that it is, it's not a great old big thing.
No, because you're trained in certain areas, so you automatically reflex those areas, so that's why the plate is only there, because.
I did not know that.
Yeah, so you, it it's an automatic reflex, you know, two, two, one, I mean, it's in your brain, you just do it.
Well, yeah, but I'm just thinking, I mean, when you've got someone off their rocker and they're just shooting, if they're not protected.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're, I mean.
Well, what I meant was when he was talking about the little trauma plate.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I mean.
The little trauma plate's just right here, but if you get hit with a big round anywhere else, you're gonna probably die.
Don't say that.
Don't get shot.
Yeah.
Play on first.
Well, it's not a stop good threat, learning things, it's like, ooh, not a good thing. I mean, it's a good thing to learn things, but scared, I appreciate what you three are willing to do for our kids. It's it's um, thank you.
Happy to do it, happy to be here.
You said that our cameras are the same as Post Falls, is it just Post Falls or?
Coog County uses them too.
So I'm curious, are they synchronized, I I know like some of the, so if they show up on scene and you're, any one of your cameras are going, theirs will automatically come on or vice versa, they?
We're not synced like that, nope. Ours are independent of theirs.
Yeah.
Well, given the incident that we had at Lakeland, which was a non incident, but we didn't know it at the time.
It was great training.
Yes, it was. With, I mean, how, if, you know, you get everybody there to help with the incident, how are we communicating with them in any, I mean, how are we?
It is a huge problem, a huge problem.
I think we should talk about that in, I don't think we need to be talking about communications in the public, yeah, I think that's, sorry. My bad, but, I mean, I think we have to have a communications plan, but I don't think we didn't tell everybody else.
You just have so many people, I mean, it's like anything else, when you have a lot of people talking all at the same time.
Well, Mike just, yeah, okay, we'll talk about that in the executive session, not a worry.
Um so there's a a couple of things, the other thing is is um, uh where'd it go? And I know this is probably speaking, it's on the form, um firearms. Um under authorized off duty firearms, and I think I get the gist of what it's trying to say, but maybe it should be reworded or maybe I don't. Yeah, because this is the carrying of firearms by armed district safety specialists, why off duty is not permitted.
Uh so it's the carrying of district firearms, so if I put district in there.
Okay, then we should probably say that, cause it it just says when they're off duty, they can't.
They can carry their own.
And then do we have a preferred local vendor for um authorized, okay, so we already have that?
Yep.
Okay.
So we can add again, I'm just curious, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
Just says that storing the gun state provided by the Lakeland Joint School District at the armed.
Yep.
At the armed where it's home.
We um, yeah, we need to change that, cause we, that's, that was what we, that was the initial plan and then we ended up restoring.
We have safes in the school.
Right, is that where you're storing your guns? In your, in the school safe, okay, so we need to change that language. Cause we initially said, so that you had it when you got to school, that you would be taking it home and we were gonna provide the safe.
And probably we should just say both actually, because the perfect example is Mark, our new guard that's coming on. We're not gonna have a safe in place for him on day one, but he's gonna have his gun, he has to take it home.
Right.
So he, yeah, we should have that flexibility.
Locked in a safe at our residence, secure.
And I would assume we're providing handguns, correct?
And rifles.
Oh, so so we do.
Yep, and ammunition and everything else, but we've never seen.
We does have the rifles.
Seagulls.
Well?
What do we have?
Yeah.
So they put them rifles.
Big gun safe.
And they have one.
Okay, no, I'm talking about if we're safing them at their home.
The rifles don't go home.
Okay.
Rifles stay, and they don't take the rifle, the rifles are there only in the event of an active shooter because as we learned when we were in Texas, um your ability to be um accurate in your shooting with a handgun is is much less than your ability to be accurate with a long, they called a long gun. So we provide a, we have a rifle at every one of our schools where we have a police officer or a N S R O.
And where, where is that kept?
Where's the safe, it it's kept in a gun safe and it's um in different locations within the schools, but the majority of them, I think, are in the office complex, John Hatcher has his own.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
For executive session, where, whenever there be.
Yeah, that's fine.
So all the repairs and everything are authorized by the superintendent, which is fine, but I think the board should be aware of some of these going ons too.
If if we had a malfunctioning weapon?
Yeah, well, just if you said, oh, yeah, you know, we had to send blah, blah, blah off or whatever, cause it just says under um the repairs and modifications, it just lists the superintendent.
Hi, do you want me to add, um and the superintendent shall notify the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the inventory sheet is not gonna be public? Was the inventory sheet gonna be public? Okay, just making sure. Saying that whole page is gonna be, just.
Is that one on here?
Why, I don't think so.
It was at the bottom, wasn't it?
Yeah, we don't have a map to it, but that's okay. Yeah, does it need to be for the public? So then, in a sense, these protocols need to be, need to be transitioned into policies.
Or or maybe a policy is written and then this document is linked in to support it or however you guys wanna do that.
Yeah, okay. Look at it and.
Yeah.
You're adding more policies to our bodies.
There's, there definitely needs to be one in place, but.
We just love what we do. Yeah, I think it's, thank you for showing us these, it's it's good to under.
Yeah, you haven't had a chance to look at them, I just wanted you to know that we did a lot of work to make sure that the work that they do has some procedures and protocols typed in.
So who is tracking, um and I assume there's some type of sheet, sort of like the one we looked at, the chain of custody for, you know, if a firearm's taken out of service, where it's taken to or who's working on it and um I mean, is all of that tracked also in all of the annual, it talks about annual training and, you know, uh range qualifications and all, I mean, are we actually tracking all that, are we keeping?
Yeah, so the way, the way the chain uh chain of custody would work is if you, if you had your laptop computer right there and you uh you gave it to me and you filled this form out, you signed off on it and I signed that I received it, we would make a copy of that and you would keep the copy, the original goes with that item and then there, if I get it and I go, well, I can't fix it, I gotta give it to somebody else, I sign off on it, I get a copy saying that, oh, I'm no longer in possession of it, he signed for it, you see how that works?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
But at what point does the fifth person down the line had, give to the first person all that that we? In other words, like in in my world, we have like a shop traveler, but all the way back, like the fifth person knows, you know, four, three, two, one and where it came from, so at what point does that happen with the paperwork? So I have my copy that I gave it to you, but I don't have a copy that you now handed it off to someone else who handed it off to someone else.
And you wouldn't need to, because I would have my own copy, so if the orig, if you've got your computer back, you would get it back with the original document, or we could take the original document, file it somewhere, whatever we need to do with.
So on that original document, everybody who's touched it is on one piece of paper?
Yes, that's, that's the idea of it, and then everybody who had it got a copy, so they can say.
I think what, I think what Ramona's asking is if she initiates it, but it gets to person number five, how does she know that that's where it is, like how do we know?
She'd have to go to the person she gave it to and that person would have to go to the person they gave it to.
Right.
So is there a way that we can maybe?
Well, when is that ever gonna happen, five different people anyway? If we were talking about, the only reason you'd have that is it's a big item like your bowie knife or a a piece of evidence for law enforcement or something like that, so that's only gonna change a couple of hands anyway, so we would know exactly where that ultimately ended up.
Yeah, I suppose if we had a malfunctioning weapon and we gave it to the armor at Ratcham Police Department to work on and they couldn't fix it, they'd give it back to us, they wouldn't necessarily send it on to somebody else.
Yeah, and I don't know that we would even use that form to do that, I mean, we have a, we could track them, we could do it by email or.
We're just going there to sit with them.
Yeah, we'd just go in there and sit with them probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about specifically is a firearm, who, who is responsible to, on our end to say, yeah, it's broken, okay, we're taking it here, we left it with them and then.
Well, I I can assure you, the three of us are quite knowledgeable about firearms and we certainly.
Bring it to Dan.
We, we know uh, we know when they're broken for sure.
No, I know, I under, I get that, what I'm trying to say is to to cover the district. You know, we would have to say that we were fully aware of every single movement that that firearm made and that there was no way it was ever out of our custody.
Right, gotcha.
Right, that's what, that's all I'm trying to.
We could use that form for that exact purpose.
Yeah, or whatever form, I was just wondering if we had, if we had that, you know, that if it ended up somewhere it shouldn't be, we could say, well.
I I mean, I don't have any issues with that, I mean, it's a great idea to use that form for that purpose, um to to cover the district and it's exactly.
And whoever's firearm it is, I mean, you know.
It's very rare for the fire, the today's modern firearms to break anyway, but it's not impossible, many things do happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Which brings up something else, potentially having spare.
We're actually working on that.
Yeah.
I asked Mike to, to look into ordering one so that we have one in case we ever have an issue or we have one that's malfunctioning.
Real warning shots.
Have we ever had to utilize the drug sniffing dog?
We've had them in the high school.
You have them in the high school? How did that go?
It's excellent.
Okay, but what I mean is, what the protocol states, um is that it can't be used to single out a person or possession of snip, you have to use a row of lockers, backpacks, persons or vehicles. So can you, I mean, how did that work?
Um well, we've used it a few different times, so we're lucky that the city Ratcham has a dog available that we can use. Yep, um lockers in the school, uh just walking down the the locker room and the owner just points at the locker, sets the command and the dog takes off walking or in the locker rooms, the P locker rooms.
Okay.
People leave their bags sitting out, students, we'd lock the doors, no students around.
Right.
Um it's just items that are, that are sitting out.
Okay, okay.
And with the kids around, we like the kids to see that there's a dog in the school, so so now the kids come up, pet the dogs, I mean, he's been in your school a bunch too.
Okay.
It's a good deterrent.
So legally, we can't, you can't, I can't be the principal and have Randy come to me as a student and say, I saw Bob put, you know, a joint in his locker and then.
Looking at him when she said that.
And we can't legally just bring the dog in and have the dog sniff Bob's locker.
Okay.
Because it sets it up a little bit too much, so what we can do is have him, have the dog walk down the hallway in which Bob's locker is, and then if the dog hits on Bob's locker without any help from an adult, then we can, then then we have reasonable suspicion, we can open the locker and, you know, do the checking or whatever. But um same with cars, our lot, the cars belong to the kids, but they're parked in our parking lot, so legally we can bring the dog in and they can sniff a row of cars, but again, we can't direct them to anyone particular.
Bob and his joints.
Yeah, self falls, ruin the day, Bob. Well, yeah, we're, I I think it would be prudent with like it making these public, putting them on the policies because these need to be also cross referenced in some of the student policies. because these need to be also cross-referenced in some of the student policies that we have, so that everyone is aware, that everyone is aware
Mm-hmm, right.
That this is what's going to happen.
Or is happening.
Or, yeah, so.
And sometimes, um, it used to be, I don't know if we're doing it as much anymore, but it used to be that, that we would just bring the dog in randomly, no, um, you know, no reason to, but they just would walk the, just, it would, it's a really good deterrent, if the kids know that the dog's gonna show up, it's a good deterrent for some kids to at least not bring those things on the property.
Could this be aligned with the search and seizure policy, and?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so that everybody knows that everybody knows.
Yep.
I mean, there's no backdoor approach, so to speak, that people are gonna come after them, or come after us, I just, there's no need for that, so.
Don't the PDs, um, like Spirit Lake and or Ratri, um, do, kinda just training with the dogs too, and they'll just come into the school? Not because that there's necessarily a suspected
Right.
Reason, but they'll just do it randomly.
So they, they, um, uh, act on the command that is given, they just need the practice of, of doing those things. I know Ratri Police Department actually, um, at one point asked me if they could put, um, drugs in my youngest daughter's, uh, gas tank, to, to teach the dog how to sniff around that part of the car, and I, I said, yeah, but does that smell go away? After you take it out, is she gonna get hurt, or having drugs in her car, so, I don't, they don't think they do that, but, um, anyway, they were looking for ways to teach the dogs how to, what they're looking for, and how to look for it.
I can't believe you used Bob's next level for a joint. I'm still caught up on that.
So how do we wanna move forward with?
I will make, I've been taking notes as you've suggested modifications, so I'll make those changes, um, to the document, and then I can bring it to the, um, September board meeting for approval as an action item.
Okay.
And if you're reminded.
Should we go to the lawyer first?
Uh, not one, that's one of the things that's on here, so, um, Amy White was the attorney who read through them initially.
Oh, okay. Okay.
She saw all of them and gave us, um.
Which, I mean, is she still the ICRM attorney though?
Well, Anderson.
Ada.
Yeah.
Right.
Anderson Julian Hall is the ICRM attorney, she happened to be one of them, I know, I think she's given up her position there, doesn't work for West Ada.
Okay. So we would have an ICRM attorney.
Question, uh, Lisa, these protocols apply to these gentlemen in their active capacity. They do not apply to SRO officers?
SROs are police officers, and police officers have their own policies that look exactly like these, but they say law enforcement officers, um, so, they, they fall under their law enforcement officer policy.
So no, no differences that you're aware of?
We, we use theirs.
But did they, do they fall under the reasonable suspicion?
They're actually a little stricter, we see.
Yeah, that's the one difference, you guys have reasonable suspicion.
Yeah, they have probable cause.
Probable cause, yeah.
That's why they use the law enforcement policies, but our, the policies that we are using are those policies that they use, we just change them to reflect either the person or the school environment.
One other question, um, in the event of a, a major incident, define whatever you want out of that, uh, but it's a situation where more resources are required than what these gentlemen can offer, so law enforcement or other personnel are called in, what are the protocols defining who's in charge of that?
If it's a criminal act, the police, the law enforcement agency's gonna have, um, investigation authority over that, I mean, it's just like any other crime. You know, if you need to report a crime, you may call a police officer, so if we're, if we need additional resources, and it would, I would assume it would be for a crime, a criminal act, and therefore, law enforcement is gonna have to take the lead on that investigation, in order to prepare a report for possible charges.
In, in any kind of significant event, um, the person with the most information on site is incident command until they're relieved of incident command, so in the event of a, you know, an explosion at a school, that person could be the principal, or it could be one of these three, it just depends on who happens to have the most information at the time, but when fire department comes, that, they will hand off incident command to the fire chief, and the fire chief takes over as the incident commander.
Supposing we had a, uh, everybody could get wrestling, or basketball, football, anyway, a major brawl breaks out, so now we've got a lot of people involved, and you're one person, well, where do you go with that?
Every, every situation's different, there's no easy answer for that sort of stuff, but certainly we'd record that, so.
And there would probably be a nine-one-one call, if it was bad enough where people were getting hurt, and they couldn't get the crowd under control, nine-one-one would be called.
Okay, so, so law enforcement comes in, how, what's, what's the handoff, how, how does that work?
There isn't one, as soon as they walk in, they're in charge, and they're dealing with the principal at that point in time.
Yeah, I would imagine with a lot of people, everybody's gonna be busy, you know what I mean, like, if I was armed guard there in that sporting event, I'm gonna be focused on whatever I can control here, and if this brawl is still brewing over there, they're gonna go do that, that's how law enforcement is trained, to, to assist with that situation, they're not all just gonna pile up on one thing, and like.
Yeah, the reason I ask that question is because experience tells us, you know, even with, within law enforcement agencies, if they don't have well-defined protocols about who's in charge at what point in time, and how the handoff takes place, it turns into confusion, and that, that leads to a real mess in some instances.
I think the difference here, though, is, we aren't gonna have an entire team that they have to try and, um, gain control of as well. It's one, in, one armed individual that they can make contact with, and then they would take over the.
Yeah, if it's an, if definitely if it's a, there's some criminal activity going on, law enforcement, if they're immediately handed incident command, and we, we, so, all of our law enforcement agencies are part of our district safety task force, and we talk through these things constantly, what does incident command look like? We learned a lot from the Lakeland High School situation, because incident command fell apart, and when you talk about a lot of, of the big events that have happened, that's one of the first things that goes south, and it's, there are lots of reasons for that, and we can talk about those in executive session, but, um, we have been really intentional in, um, identifying, so for example, if there's something happening in Ratri, Chief McLean is not gonna wait around and be part of incident command, and she's the first, first person at the building she's going in, but Spirit Lake will be responding, and the minute Dennis Sanchez gets to Ratri, he's setting up incident command. So they have worked those details out because of what we learned from the Lakeland High School situation.
Yeah, well, you know, it's one of those situations today where Ratri PD responds, County Sheriff's Office responds, Idaho State Police responds, now you've got three separate agencies with different.
The local jurisdiction is the one that would take incident command unless they're unable to, and then they hand it off, and that's the part that we've been working on, is the handoff.
See, that, that's my point, how, you know, what are the protocols for that sort of thing to happen, so you don't have the after-action
Right.
confusion that comes out of those situations.
It's a constant, um, that's, that's always at the forefront of the conversations that we're having, and it helps to have all of those, ISP is on our team, it helps to have all those people at the table, so we all have the same knowledge, kinda going into a situation, should we ever have to.
Well, and I don't know, I mean, these protocols are specific for our armed guards, because they are our employees, and there is a liability issue on the table for the district as a whole. I don't know that we can dictate to other area agencies what we are expecting in respect to, um, an incident command handoff with respect to the incident, I mean, I think there's so many variable factors that will weigh in on that specific incident at that specific time,
Yep.
that understanding a general idea of how it should go is, I think, where we're gonna land. This is specific to our, our people, not necessarily, you know, an incident occurring, and this is how things are gonna go down.
Yep, Mike and I did talk about, but you're, but you're exactly right, this, these are two separate issues, but Mike and I did talk about, maybe planning a neck, for next summer, an inter-agency kind of, um, you know, when kids are not here, some sort of a drill at one of our schools where we actually have to initiate the incident command, because it is an important part of what we do, but it's just, I mean, we're only one piece of that really big, um, puzzle.
Well, at the Texas thingy, the, one guy talked about, 'cause he was like, the guru at one of the schools, 'cause down there, they have like these major schools, and like, it was a lot, but in doing something like that, where you have actors, and trying to be, I think setting something up like that, where it was all hands on deck, would be hugely beneficial in understanding how to hand things off, or how things are gonna play out.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be really cool.
But do it.
I could count that out.
There you go. And we, uh, we've done active shooter drills in our schools, and, um, children of our law enforcement officers have been, uh, they've been there, and they've, they've been the kids, and, um, it makes it a little bit more real for adults when the kids are in the building, and.
Right.
Um, so, there are lots of different ways that we can get better at what we do, but, um, we are constantly talking about those things, and pla, and talking through them and planning for them, in the hopes that we never have to use them.
Exactly, exactly.
My recommendation would be from a policy standpoint, is once the lawyer looks at them, then we bring them to policy, and then try to align the ones that we have, like the search and seizure, like, are they congruent with each other's? I mean, if there's any, the restraint policy, the ones that are, that we have that are specific to students,
Mm-hmm.
um, we kind of make sure that we're not, there isn't anything that directs conflict, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But I think it'd be helpful to have a lawyer look at it.
I'll just share it with Lynn after I hear back from Megan.
Yeah.
More policies.
There you go. No, just aligning the ones we have.
Yeah.
Some of which they didn't know we had until.
Well, we're, we're making, we're making progress slowly. Right, I'm on the countdown.
So is there further conversations we'd like to have with respect to the protocols? Okay.
Not at this time, just wanna read through all of them.
Any other, anything else you wanna bring out on the table for the workshop?
Not for this part.
Okay, well, then that will conclude the Armed Guarding Crisis Plan Workshop. I do need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one D.
Move that we enter into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one D.
Do we need to add?
And B.
And B.
And B.
And B.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, so you need a roll call vote?
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Vane?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Quimi?
Yes.
Hearing all this, motion passes. For our next executive session.
Thank you guys very much.
Well, they're not interested.
Okay, so we are coming out of executive session, uh, there are no, uh, possible action items after executive session, so therefore, it is eight fifteen, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
Before nine o'clock?
Yep.
I'm unplugging everybody.
You didn't pause it.
Yeah.